The approval of our agenda is our next item for consideration that was posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Motion and second to approve the agenda. Final discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We're going to start tonight with a recognition, and tonight we have a recognition for girls swim and dive for state. And I believe Erin Felber is going to walk us through that. Erin, our West Athletic Director. Good evening to you. We're eager to meet these folks.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So on behalf of both myself and Molly Hanks, our East AD, because our swim team is a co-op team, we want to congratulate. We have Maddie Rommel here and Nikki Walters, and we are going to hear from their coaches. So we have one diver and one swimmer who qualified for state this year. So first, we'll call up Coach Dave Blumier, and then after that, you'll have Coach Alex Kane for diving. Thank you.
Girl, step up in front there. Anyone I call your name off. Okay. Anyway, I'm David Blumier, the head swimming coach, and Alex Kane is our diving coach. And we have two young ladies here. My first, Nicole Walters. Nick, if you would step up just a little bit. There you go. Nick has qualified for state for all three, the last three years. This year, she qualified in two events, the 200 individual medley, and she placed 16th place, and the 100 fly, which she placed 13th. And she also broke the school record in the 100 meter fly. That record was held by Morgan Champagne. Nikki is going to be attend Northern Iowa. And she's been our captain for the last few years, and just a tremendous young lady.
All right, Madison, if you want to take a step forward. This is Madison. She is a very talented diver. This is her second year at state. She is a sophomore, so she did qualify last year as a freshman, which is amazing. She's honestly probably a coach's favorite kind of athlete because she's talented, she works hard, and she catches on quickly. So she makes coaching really easy. Makes me look good, so. But she has done phenomenal. Early on, at the beginning of the season, I told her after her first meet, I said, you know, she kind of had her eyes on the school record, and I said, you know, this year, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And sure enough, later on that season, she broke the school record. So as a sophomore, she's broken the school record, she went to state, and she's got a very bright future ahead of her.
Well, congratulations to both of you. Just out of curiosity, when did you begin diving? At what age? Last year? That's fantastic. Wow. That's amazing. That's fantastic. And when did you begin swimming? At the age, at age nine. Yeah, fantastic. Well, thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate it, and congratulations on your accomplishments. This is often kind of the awkward part of the meeting where we're going to continue on with our meeting, and we know that you folks may have other things to do. We always encourage people to stay. But if you, but if you have other things going, you know, it's school night, then... Oh, she's going to practice. Well, we're not offended if you need, if you need to leave, but of course, we welcome you to stay. But thank you for coming, and congratulations. Appreciate it. Absolutely. All right. Next, we have public participation, and I do not have any public participation cards. Is there any one that I've missed? I'm not seeing any, and so we'll move forward to our consent agenda. And we have a lighter consent agenda. We have minutes of our last board meeting on November 14. We have no contracts, resignations, or retirements to approve, but we do also have the revenues and expenditures in the aggregate report through October 31 of 2022. I'd move to approve this consent agenda. Is there a second? Melanie, thank you for the second. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And now we are on to reports, and our, we have reports for Silverbrook and Badger to start, I believe. So Dr. Jill Reese, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is going to kick this off. Good evening to you.
Good evening. So tonight, we have two reports. We were scheduled for three. Just to let you know that John Graff is out ill, so he will not be presenting for Green Tree tonight. And he is the interim principal at Green Tree. And we do have Silverbrook. We have Lance Rell and Heather Gelnich presenting. And for Badger, we have Dave Omen and Tyler Wood, and Bob Feldcamp is also presenting. We have a big team from Badger. So they will be, starting with Silverbrook, and Badger will be up after that. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We are excited to tell you about all the good things that are happening at Silverbrook this year. So it all starts with our district pyramid that continues to guide our improvement efforts at Silverbrook. Our school goals align with the district goals of safety, engagement, and then effective and efficient is handled by the district, but all of those things support student learning that obviously continues to be our primary focus at our school. So our first goal this year surrounds student learning. So by the end of the school year, our goal is that students will increase their reading proficiency by at least 5% as measured by the forward exam. So from 49 to 54, and 36 to 41. And we have a number of action steps that we're doing to make that happen. First one is push-in intervention. So like our elementary schools, interventionists are pushing into classrooms 20 to 30 minutes, two to three times a week. They collaborate with teachers and are able to pull small groups of students to do guided reading and conferring. Additionally, we have classroom paras who are sometimes a third person in the room, so a lot of good resources in there. Co-teaching is also happening. This is our second year of co-teaching at Silverbrook with our regular and special education teachers. So instead of students in special ed being pulled out for literacy, with our house structure, we're able to pair our language arts teacher with our special education teacher to provide two instructors for all the students in the room, including students receiving special education services. And then our reading and writing minutes are fewer than elementary's. So one of our goals has been to find additional time during the day, and we're using our community time to find that additional time for our reading and writing. And then a strategy we'll be implementing in December is lesson study. So content professional learning communities plan a lesson together. They'll watch each, watch each other teach it, provide feedback, and then see how it was received by students. Unfortunately, our schedule allows for this kind of adult learning, which is really cool. Now on to math, and my Assistant Principal, Heather Gelnick.
All right. For student learning in the area of math, our goal is that our planned actions will assist us in achieving our goal of students increasing their math proficiency by 5% as measured by the 2023 forward exam. Our fifth graders moving from 60% to 65%, and our sixth graders moving from 56 percentile to the 61st percentile. Some of our actions include math push-in intervention. This is where our math interventionist is pushing into our math classrooms for 20 to 30 minutes, two to three times a week. Our interventionist collaborates with classroom teachers to determine the need for a particular group of students. The focus may be grade-level content, or it may be a skill or strategy that is lacking. Similar to language arts, Silverbrook is unique to have a house structure where the special education teacher is embedded into the house team. This is our second year of teachers co-teaching in the area of math. Students are reading and writing in math class every day. Teachers are instructing students exactly how to write a math response. Teachers are explicitly teaching students how to read, break down, and understand word problems. We have also implemented Dreambox in our fifth grade, and our fifth grade students use this digital tool 15 to 20 minutes a day. Onto engagement and customer satisfaction. Our work at Silverbrook began at the end of the 21-22 school year, where we solicited feedback from our staff and our parent-teacher organization. Two areas that we're targeting are increasing staff reporting that they have input into workplace decisions. We'd like to see that grow from 57.1 to 62%, as well as increasing the percentage of staff who feel the feedback they receive from their supervisor is beneficial. Increasing that from 70.4 to 75% is measured by the district employee engagement survey. We have been working with our building leadership team to clarify types of decisions. Some decisions are administrative decisions, some are a collaborative decision, and some are staff decisions. We have also clarified the chain of communication and emphasized that in our professional learning communities at the start of the year, and continue to do so in our staff bulletins. We have been implementing the new rapid-cycle feedback process this year, and it has been very well-received. We feel that feedback is more timely and targeted. We launched a family survey over the past two weeks, and it closed November 25. Our building leadership team will be using the results to set a family engagement goal and then develop action steps.
I have a question. The, so I'm assuming that the, the goal to move from 57.1% to 62% for the engagement is going to occur due to the changes in the communication clarification and the feedback?
Yes.
I, I think that's a great idea. However, if, are you also prepared to implement some of the feedback that you received rapidly? Because that's where the real rubber meets the road.
Yes.
Getting feedback is the first step, and very important. But you also need to be able to respond and react rapidly as well in order for that number to increase like you want it to.
No, and I agree. We've been gathering feedback and kind of encouraging and collecting that feedback since last spring, as Heather mentioned. And we've implemented several changes. You know, like one of the things is that community time. You know, staff talked about not having those opportunities to work with kids and just having the time to do that. And we, we made that flip this year, adding 30 minutes, you know, every day to be able to do that so kids could build those relationships with their, with their teachers and, and really establish those connections that are so important. So completely agree. You know, gathering feedback without action is, is useless, so.
And if, obviously, there needs to be a process for implementing. And if, if employees know when those increments occur, then they don't get impatient or feel like their feedback has fallen on deaf ears.
Right.
So I'm, it doesn't necessarily have to happen immediately, but if it is done at known intervals, then it can provide some satisfaction.
Completely agree with that, too. So our building leadership team meets on a monthly basis. So agenda items are created, you know, by the members of BLT. Decisions are made, communicated out at those, at those regular intervals to help do that. Because I think in the past, sometimes people just weren't clear, you know, how decisions are being made. So having everybody at the table and then clearly communicating those out to the people. You know, we've got representation from across each house in the building, from all of our, our work categories, you know, so that those pieces can be communicated out. And it's not perfect. You know, we're still working on that, but it's definitely a point of emphasis, so.
Having a communication timeline to be on the meeting.
For sure. Thanks, Tony. Our next up, our next goal area is safe and secure. So student behavior and belonging has been a big emphasis as well. So the goal was to increase the percentage of students earning zero-to-one behavioral, behavioral referrals to 82% as measured by the Skyward referral data for this year. So as of today, in fifth grade, 96% of students haven't earned a referral, zero or one referrals, and sixth grade is at 84.2% right now. So that's current right now. And then some action steps related to that include welcoming circles on Mondays and Fridays. So we worked with our staff in August, and we talked about that community time that we built in. So they're able to connect with their students, their morning meeting kids on Mondays and Fridays to be able to do that. We do our shout-outs on announcements. We do these Viking helmets. So they're placed around mailboxes so staff can give shout-outs to each other. And then we have our Viking man shout-out postcards that go to students at our school as well, too. So just some of those tangible things to encourage that. Talked about community time. We reteach and reinforce through restorative projects that are assigned alongside a suspension or detention, traditional things like that. And we call that restorative time. We design lessons to teach students expected behavior for situations like assemblies and celebrations. So we're teaching those behaviors in advance. We believe students who are involved and engaged display a higher level of respect for the school, adults, and peers. So we've been working with a staff member to design service activities for kids like cleaning in the cafeteria, making deliveries, patrolling in the hallway, and planting trees. And we deployed a student survey on the 17th of November where we measured student belonging, connection, bullying, upstanders, favorite books, and characteristics of super learners, because that's our theme this year. And we'll be adding those action steps at our next BLT meeting. So we'll be building those into the improvement plan as well. And the last slide are just some, some neat pictures of things going on at our school. So in the upper left-hand corner, my office was flash-mobbed by the Viking attack a few weeks ago. That's our after-school band group. We've got some pictures from fifth-grade camp from this year, so we've got campfire cooking. Top picture, we've got a monster whopper. I think that was a, is that a, what kind of fish? Bluegill, thank you. And then we've got kids canoeing as well, and nobody fell in the lake over at Camp Silverbrook this year. We had a group of students that went out to Paradise Gardens the other day, bottom left-hand corner, and they were able to pick out the trees that we're going to be planting. We were going to plant them this fall, but the weather is not cooperating, so we're going to do that next spring. The Gaga Ball pit is the bottom middle picture. That is the hottest thing going at recess time. If you haven't played it, come on over. It's a good time. And then we continue to do dress-up days and spirit days and things like that. So Halloween was no exception. There's a ton of participation. So again, a lot of great things going on at Silverbrook, so thanks for listening. It's a pleasure to be here.
Great questions, John.
I just have a couple of questions. So regarding a couple of intervention items with math and, and reading, do you see that the interventions actually work, and why are our goals set so low?
Well, to answer the first question, so far, the interventions from staff anecdotal, you know, anecdotal report are going well. So in the past interventions, students were pulled out of class during one of their specials classes, so during world language, or music, or art, or FIAED. Now, kids are able to participate in all of those, and the interventionists go to them and work with them in the class. So it's a benefit to the kids. They were able to pick up another class. But then those interventionists are able to work with the classroom teacher to pull small groups. So in a classroom, instead of the teacher pulling one small group, there's two small groups going with the interventionists, and then they collaborate. They talk about kids and how they're meeting their needs, and they're able to make those adjustments. As far as the, where the goals are set, that's a pretty standard, that 5%.
But I mean, I, I guess I would just say, we would, our goal should be 100% of all students are, are ready to go to the next grade. And with this, we're saying half of the students are maybe ready to go into Badger. You know, and I think we're setting up Badger, you know, for failure at that point, then.
And we, we talk about, really what's going on right now is building up the effectiveness of our tier-one practices. So actually, that intervention embedded in the classroom supports the tier-one. You know, when you're trying to boost up all of the kids in reading and math, because I would agree, we want all of our kids to be proficient in reading and math. So that strategy helps support that as well.
So my, my follow-up to that is I think there's more we can do as far as kids that need intervention. And I, and I think if I can make a suggestion that we need to implement some kind of mandatory reading and sign-off from parents. I don't think kids read nearly enough, and obviously, to be proficient at reading, you have to read more.
Right.
So I mean, we can't just expect the kids to read for an extra half hour in the school day, you know, with an interventionist, and then continue to make up ground. And that's why we're, we're only seeing the standard 5% increase in, you know, proficiencies. I think we can definitely bump that up if we get mandatory reading. And I think you can get a lot of parents to agree, we will, you know, we will enforce this at home, and we have to sign off on this. And if you don't, you know, that might be grounds to hold somebody back. If they're not proficient enough to pass these grades, then why would we push them forward to fail further? You know?
Well, and you nailed it on the head. The best way to get better at reading is by reading.
Right.
So however they do that, I mean, it, that's number one.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to look at a, a mandatory reading sign-off for kids that are not. So I'll just leave that there. You guys, obviously, are professionals. You can figure out how to maybe set something up like that to maybe, you know, help with this. And then as far as math, are we, during intervention, are we just teaching the kids the exact same ways that they're failing at learning it the first time? Or do we have different methods of teaching them in intervention?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that's where the math interventionists would pull out some different strategies. So if the students aren't getting it the first time, whether it's through manipulatives, they'll get out whiteboards, markers, different ways to break it apart, having the kids talk about it and talk through what they're thinking is a way that the math interventionist can work with small groups if the students aren't getting it the first time. And another positive to the push-in model is we don't have to wait until we decide certain students need intervention. If the classroom teacher says, oh, Heather's really not getting this right now, Heather can slide into that group and get that extra instruction right and embedded in the class.
Okay. Do we offer tutors? I mean, others, even peer tutors, you know, students that are actually really good at math, that they can work on one-on-one. I know, you know, some kids might actually benefit from that much better than a grouped intervention.
Right, that's, that's another strategy that teachers would use in the classroom, is like a peer mentor, peer model, you know, that where they're talking through the problem with one another. Teachers will do that, too.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if there was an opportunity for maybe some of the older kids of high school to get some volunteer hours to help out at some of these younger grades doing that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I don't think we have that going on right now this year. No.
Okay.
Other questions? Melanie?
I was just curious more about the community time. I feel like maybe that was, was that implemented before I was on the board? So I don't really, I heard you mention it several times, but what exactly is that, and what does it look like?
So it's really a dedicated time for, well, let's go back. So our students are organized into morning meetings. So we've got houses, and we've got three teachers in a traditional house. Each of them has a morning meeting. So they have a, a group of students that they are responsible for, that they're the contact person for. So that community time is intended, that's the time when our social-emotional lessons are taught on Tuesdays. So our second-step lessons are there. And then on Mondays and Fridays, they do check-ins with the kids to, you know, see how their weekend was, what they're looking forward to this week. On Fridays, it's the checkout. How was your week? What are you looking forward to, you know, over the weekend, and doing those pieces? It can also be used for house activities, and you name it. Some houses run a, a pretty vibrant school store. So during that time, kids can go out and use their Viking pride cards to purchase things from the school store. I know that's a, looking at Mrs. Laidoff back there, they're, they're known for their school store. So it's an opportunity to be able to do those things as well. Thank you.
Other questions? We appreciate the report. Thank you very much. All right. I think next, we welcome Dave Ullman, Tyler Wood, and Bob Feldcamp for Badger. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to wait till we get our show on the road. There it is. All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Dave Ullman. I'm the principal of Badger Middle School. On behalf of Tyler Wood, Bob Feldcamp, I thank you for listening to our information about Badger tonight. We're excited to tell you about our goal and our site improvement plan for this year. So as Lance kind of alluded to, there's our, the pyramid of success, so to speak, for, for the district. So the theme for Badger in this slide is really to recalibrate. In student learning, we're look, we're refocusing on our universal instruction, what we call our tier-one instruction in, in education speak. Focus for math is to be grounded in our CPM, or college-prepared math strategies, mainly increasing the student-to-student discourse and receiving their feedback on how to gauge our instruction and, and look at our instruction. In ELA, English Language Arts, the work has been deploying the Readers and Writers Workshop. That has been a, a strategy that, that has been all-encompassing for the, the ELA. That framework has really encompassed the ELA classrooms. Next. Oh, I'm sorry, not next. In the safe and secure engagement and customer satisfaction and effective and efficient portions of the pyramid, we can look at those and really engage, look at those and use the word engagement. Our goal is for students to have less disciplined referrals by creating an environment that keeps them in class, on task, and hopefully having fun in that endeavor as well. And for staff, our goal, our goal is to increase engagement through their job satisfaction. Thank you. So you can see here is our literacy achievement goal. And by the end of this school year, Badger Middle School students will increase their reading proficiency by 5% as measured by the STAR test. We plan to do that with a handful of action steps there. First of all, to implement the workshop model with fidelity. The TCRWP, which is the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, the majority of our ELA teachers have been through that institute already so that they have an understanding of the workshop model and can begin deployment of that model for our students. We also have daily and weekly calibration within our houses, which is a group of two ELA teachers, a science of social studies, and a math teacher. And we also have bi-weekly department meetings where we deploy our Data-Into-Action model cycles, where they do look at, look at their lesson planning, COPLAN, and they look at student feedback, and then they look at our summative assessments, how students did on the final tests, essentially. Also, we're going to personalize and differentiate instruction. In ELA, using conferring small groups and formative data to differentiate instruction, again, according to that student need. Develop and calibrate summative and formative assessments. So those are, when we talk about formatives, those are more so like the quizzes, and the summatives is more so like the final tests. And again, we do that through bi-weekly department meetings and the weekly house meetings that the teachers have, where they're talking, constantly talking about students and student success. Teachers confer and goal-set with students. That's an extremely powerful piece in the workshop model. They get that one-on-one, and actually, not only for ELA, but that's a good universal model to see in all classrooms if a teacher can sit down and goal-set with a student and, and talk about the action steps to get to their goal. And then another thing we're doing in our ELA classrooms is writing about reading. Students will write about their reading to promote deep comprehension at a minimum of three times a week. Slide four, we look at our math achievement goal. And it says, "By the end of the school year, Badger Middle School students will increase their math proficiency by 5% as measured by STAR." Some of our action steps are to implement the CPM, or college-prepared math, model with fidelity. Again, the focus is on cooperative learning, the, the learning notes, and the student-to-student discourse. Also, we're going to develop and calibrate summative informative assessments, much like we do in ELA. It's no secret. They also do that in the math department in their bi-weekly department meetings. Looking at leveled questioning and problem-solving tasks. One of our math teachers took it upon herself to start a book study on a book called Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. One of our math teachers took it upon herself to start a book study on a book called Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics. And we've really taken off using that book as kind of a model and a guide for some of the things we do. It also got the teachers together, and they, they collaborated around best practice. And again, the calibration of our CPM, or college-prepared math practices. We wanna get to a place by the end of this year with our math department, where they are visiting one another in their classroom, where they're talking about their, their practice together, and where they're giving constructive feedback to one another, where they're comfortable enough to do that. We have some excellent math and ELA teachers. We just have to continue to give them the, the time and leniency, I guess, to, to collaborate, to calibrate, and to gather student feedback. I'm now gonna turn it over to Assistant Principal Tyler Wood.
For our engagement and customer satisfaction goal, we worked with our building leadership team to develop the goal to increase the number of staff members indicating, I'm satisfied with my job with the West Bend School District by five percent as measured by the employee engagement survey. To reach this goal, we completed, we first completed an analysis of our current state before developing our actions. Some of the strengths and opportunities identified by our building leadership team, by our building leadership team, is that we have a phenomenal staff who work hard on a daily basis to help all students in our school. Our staff work to continually improve their craft. The teachers, while they're appreciative of their evaluations, they want them to be even more meaningful. And we have a great opportunity with this, with this this year, as our own professional development as administrators across the district has been focused on the evaluation process and making them more meaningful and engaging the staff in the process. That's that rapid-cycle feedback that, that Mr. Rel talked about a few minutes ago. Another opportunity for us to build on this year is the collaboration among the staff, specifically within departments around best practice, as Mr. Ullman just talked about. There's a high level of trust amongst the staff, and providing them with opportunities to learn and grow together will only improve their practice and therefore the learning within the school. From our analysis, we developed a couple of action steps to promote our staff, which includes our staff acknowledgements. This is done through our weekly staff newsletter, where we highlight staff who have gone above and beyond in one way or another. We also highlight a staff member of the week in our school announcements and our social media posts. This is a staff member who's nominated by our students for standing out as an excellent teacher for a variety of reasons. We're also continuing to engage with our staff through culture roundings and check-ins with the staff on an individual basis. We work to, we're working to engage with our, our families, our parents through parent learning nights. And this is one way that we can engage with our parents, to build relationships between the school and, and home, and connections with them while teaching the parents useful tips and tricks for their use as a parent. And finally, another action we use is potlucks. By the end of the year, the administration will have provided a meal for, for all staff throughout Badger, because what better way to engage with the staff than to specifically set aside time to enjoy a meal together? And at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Feldcamp.
For the component of safe and secure, we focused on student behavior and belonging. Our goal for the 2223 school year is to increase the number of students with one or less major office discipline referral from seventy-nine point seven percent to eighty-five percent. We have high standards for our students, but we don't assess them academically or behaviorally on something that we haven't intentionally taught them, which is why we're so calculated with our first step in re-norming our universal expectations with students and staff. We kicked off our school year with an intentional two-day focus on building relationships and a community as a house. And that references our house system that we have, so each house was doing that separately. We also taught, demonstrated, and involved students in the learning of our expectations throughout the building. Additionally, additionally, we are incorporating booster lessons throughout the school year. The booster lessons are focused on re-teaching school-wide expectation as discipline referrals, and the data identify specific needs for us. Another action step was focused on increasing the sense of belonging. We want to provide quarterly after-school clubs for our students. Beyond athletics and the performing arts, clubs offer a unique opportunity for students to connect with others based on their interests. The longer we can keep students engaged in our building, the greater the impact we can have on them. Turn it back to Mr. Ullman. All right. And finally, we have some celebratory pictures here. Our cross-country team is on the upper left, our boy, we have, can't remember the name of the meet, but it's essentially the middle school state meet for the kids who are running middle school track at the, at that time. And our boys took second out of fifty teams, and our girls took fourteenth out of fifty teams. So that was really cool. Our Optimist Student of the Month in, in November, and just some of the various other things. You can see, I'm gonna highlight bottom middle. That was during homecoming week. That was superheroes week. You might recognize the gentleman on the right who was busting out into his Superman shirt. Is that the shirt you're wearing tonight?
It is.
Okay, that's, all right. But just a celebration of the really cool things we do at, at Badger to try, again, and engage the, the students and the families and hopefully the community.
One of the things I know that you've been working on, because I'm familiar with your work, when you look at some of the discipline in, in those pieces, a fair amount, when you unpacked all your numbers, were looking at behaviors that were connected to attendance, tardiness, all of those. And that was the bulk of some of those numbers we looked at. So I know you're gonna be doing some targeted work. I think when you come back and report, it would be of interest to break that out and show us those pieces separately to see if kind of what you're working on bears some fruit and some results on that, and kind of unmuddies and untangles some of that behavior data around the behaviors of kind of being prepared for class with having all your materials and being on time. That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And yeah, we're excited for, for today. And I don't know if I'm speaking for my staff members who are here, all two of them. Thank you for being here, ladies. But we, it was a, we had a really good meeting around that today and some exciting action steps. And that's the nice part about the staff there, is they are, they're willing to do whatever it takes. And again, with the goal of in-class, on-task. Sounds very simple, but for twelve, thirteen, and fourteen-year-olds, eight-hundred-and-fifty-four of them, it can, can be a task some days.
Great questions. Go ahead, John.
Do you have those, the referrals and stuff broken down, I'm assuming, into categories like, you know, missed it because I was in the bathroom or something like that? So you guys actually know where to focus on how to fix these?
On how to, like, the areas of the referral?
Yeah.
It's broken down by the, by the incident, and it's broken down by the time, and it's broken down by the place?
Because, like Jen said, some of them are tardies, you know, a lot of them are tardiness. I mean, I'm assuming some of those are, you know, due to kids moving through class and then stopping at the bathroom, not getting to class on time for the next class. And I'm just wondering if you have, like, something like that broken down where, you know, we have six hundred tardies because somebody was in the bathroom, or that's what they say, you know?
I don't know if it's broken down to, by the excuse.
Okay.
More so, but just, just the tardy. If we broke down by the excuse, I'd, but yeah, those are things. And actually, to be honest with you, John, that's one of the things, that was a bulk of our discussion today in our, in our meeting, was the, the tardies in the bathroom use. Because, believe it or not, like I said, you-
Well, I've heard.
Yeah, thirteen-year-olds, they're, they're trying to go to the bathroom, so.
Yep.
Well, and I think that's, like you said, with your team, that analyzing the why behind the behaviors will help you disrupt them. So it could be class avoidance. It could be, you know, some kind of peer concern. It could be, there's not enough time for, you know, having to implement certain bathroom breaks or, or things like that. So I think that analysis, even, you know, whether or not you're coding it, but just that gathering of staff who are seeing that and living that every day, and, and making sure you're talking about, what are we seeing and, and how to disrupt that will be really critical.
The other piece of that is, we, I mean, we have nine, nine, ten transitions for kids during the day. That's a lot of transition. That's something that we're looking at as well. And the staff works doggedly to make those transitions as seamless and as smooth as possible. But that's, that's the major, so we're talking about where and when and what they're doing. Really, the transition and focusing our transitions and where we're during the transitions. Tony?
What's the consequence for tardiness? Not necessarily the first time, but like, say, three times?
Sure. So three times is the magic number.
In a term or something.
Kind of get two, two freebies. The first one, you know, is, is a warning. Second one is a, a warning with a follow-up. And then the third one is, is what we call a term of major referral. And we can do anywhere from lunch detention, after-school detention. If they get chronic, we definitely engage the parents with that to let them know. If it's an issue, we'll sit down with the student and look at where their path is. They have four minutes between classes. Where are you coming from? Where are you going? Again, the staff is so great with talking to them, getting to know the kids, getting to know, trying to understand the why behind it so that we can make it, make our framework and make what we do as a school, as the adults, more streamlined. And then if they don't fit in that, then they're gonna have those consequences as well. And if it get, like I said, if it gets too chronic, really engaging the parents into that and-
And sometimes that parent engagement, sometimes it's tardy to school in general, and that could be an adult issue versus a twelve-year-old trying to get themselves to school. So it's unpacking that, working with school liaison, counselors, et cetera, to try and disrupt that. But it could result in referral to truancy court or things like that for families who aren't following through on the expectation. And, and we make every effort at the school level to unpack why that's occurring, to try and fix that, but it could result in that.
I personally, when I was a student, had trouble with tardiness, which should not come as a surprise. And, and for me, I, my executive function with time, micro-time management, just is terrible. It's, my whole life has been that way. So any, I like that you're, you have consequences. I did get sent to the principal's office once for that, and, and never again. So I liked having that consequence. I know at the work session last week, we were talking about having consequences that impact behavior. And also, I like that you're examining, okay, how can we support the student and, and in any way to make them a better student, not just punishing? So I like both approaches.
And yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate that. And the other piece of that is, when, you know, when we do have those punitive measures, like you owe us a half hour of your time, it's not gonna sit, you're not gonna sit idle for that half hour, that forty-five minutes, that hour. They're gonna be doing schoolwork. They're gonna be doing something engaging, reading the book.
Cleaning bathrooms.
What's that?
Making clean bathrooms.
Yes. Vocational skills, yeah. But try and make the best use of their time educationally as possible.
Great. Other questions? Gentlemen, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. All right. And our next report is the Curriculum Committee Report, and Melanie Ergot, who chairs that committee, is gonna give us an update. Melanie?
Okay, so the Curriculum Committee meeting was on November twenty-first. Tina Van Rue, our district assessment coordinator, presented the state accountability report cards for the 2021-22 school year. The information she shared will be shared with the whole board at tonight's meeting. Dr. Reese shared a draft of the program analysis document showing the programs that will be reviewed over a six-year cycle. The current areas going through the program analysis right now are K-12 math, K-12 assessments, and K-12 FIED. Dr. Reese also shared the steps for program analysis and the items that could potentially come forward to the Curriculum Committee and the full school board. Dr. Reese will be sharing the documents used for analysis and scoring of the analysis at the next curriculum meeting.
Great. Any questions from Melanie? Thank you for your report. And speaking of that, district and school report cards is next on the agenda. And Tina Van Rue is going to present that information, our student assessment data coordinator. Good evening.
Hello. All right. So earlier in November, the DPI issued state accountability report cards for every district and school in the state. So we're gonna go through results and also explanations of how those results came to be. The state collects a lot of data of assessments, graduation, attendance, et cetera. They collect multiple years of it, and they calculate them into four different priority areas. Achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and then on-track to graduation. Those four areas are then calculated one more time, and an overall result is given, which is aligned to a five-star rating scale. So for the 2122 report cards, West Bend earned an overall score of sixty-eight point eight, which aligns to a three-star rating of meets expectations. DPI did release a public statement, the date that the report cards were published, sharing that there were three-hundred-and-seventy-seven public school districts that received report cards. And of those, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight met, exceeded, or significantly exceeded expectations. So ninety-five percent of the districts fell within a three, four, or five-star range, including West Bend.
Where are we on the list?
So in each priority area, we get a ranking that shares where we fall in line with all other K-12 districts. So I'll be sharing that throughout the presentation. We fell in the meets expectation and aligned to the other public schools. Fifty-four percent of all of the K-12 public schools fell within that three-star rating. So the vast majority fell in that three-star area, just like we did. On the district report card, there are a lot of information shared on the first page. One piece of that information is the percentage of students that are economically disadvantaged. This piece of info is really important as to how the calculations work. The four priority areas that are listed in the colorful pie chart are directly affected. The purple and the blue, achievement and growth areas, work kind of on a scale with one another. Depending on how large of a percentage of economically disadvantaged students you have, one would be weighted heavier than the other, or vice versa. So the thirty-five percent of students being economically disadvantaged is the threshold that is gonna start to tip the scales for those two different areas. If your population is less than thirty-five percent economically disadvantaged, your achievement is gonna be weighted more heavily than your growth. If you are greater than thirty-five percent, then your growth is gonna be weighted more heavily than your achievement. And as you can see by our value, we fell at thirty-two point four percent economically disadvantaged. So as itemized in our priority area, our achievement is weighted more heavily than our growth. That percentage of economically disadvantaged is, makes every report card very unique. There isn't even two schools in our own district that have the exact same percentage of students. So it makes every report card's calculation unique to one another. The first area of the district report card that we'll examine is the area of achievement. In the first graphic, you'll see the overall score that's issued. That score is calculated from English Language Arts and math results. Any students that take the state assessments in grades three through eleven, which would encompass the Wisconsin Forward Exam, the ACT Aspire, and the ACT, as well as the alternate assessment, the DLM, which is taken by a really small population of students with the most significant needs. They use all of that results, and they use three years of those results to calculate the scores. So you can see how our district scored in each of those subjects. And then the light gray line underneath is also gonna show you what the state score was. You can see how we compared from scores. The second visual is the ranking. So this is, John, what you were kind of asking about, where did we fall? So this district is compared to all other K-12 districts. In the area of achievement, you can tell by the tall, dark-blue vertical line that the majority of the districts fell within that score range of a sixty point one to a seventy. And within that, we were near the top of that bar, where we were at eighty-one point three percent ranking compared to other K-12 districts. The next area is growth. They use very similar data to create the scores. The one difference is that the students that take the alternate assessment are not added into these results. So these results are just from Wisconsin Forward, ACT Aspire, and ACT. Again, you can see where our scores landed compared to the state, as well as where our district ranked. So in the ranking, again, we fell where the majority of the districts fell, as noted by the tall blue bar. But we were closer to the bottom of that blue bar with a ranking of thirty-three point two percent.
Tina, can you describe for me, when we talk about achievement, or we talk about growth?
Yes.
What's the difference? Can you define that for me? I just wanna be sure I see this in the right context.
Well, that's a great question. So achievement is how you're doing at that grade level at that snapshot in time. So are you meeting those grade-level proficiency expectations? Growth is calculating using the scale scores from the test and how you grew one year to the next. So achievement is one snapshot in time, how you're doing at grade level. Growth is how you move as you kind of level up grade level year after year, and if you're growing at similar or comparable rates to other districts.
That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next area is the on-track to graduation. On the district report card, you're gonna see four different areas. On the district report card, you're going to see four different areas listed, including absenteeism, graduation, third-grade ELA test results, eighth-grade math test results. You'll see that graduation is kind of boxed in red because on school report cards, that category may look a little bit different. If you are looking at a K-8 school report card, that graduation area is going to be swapped out for attendance. So for those schools, attendance is going to be counted twice in this area, one positively through that lens and one kind of negatively through the absentee lens. When looking at a high school or a district report card, you will see the graduation area. Looking at our ranking, you can see that the majority of the K-12 districts in the state fell within the 80.1 to 90 results, and our ranking was at 63.9% compared to other K-12 areas. One unique thing about the sub-scores that go into this, different than achievement and growth, where they look at three years of data and see how you do over time, in the area of attendance and graduation, they're only looking at one year, and it's lagged. So the information that we're looking at here for graduation and attendance is the data from the 2021 school year, so the year that we returned from the COVID closure. The last area is called the target group outcomes. The target group outcome is a mini-report card within this report card. They collect all the same data and all the same information, and they calculate it the same way. But they're not calculating it for all students. They're only calculating it for the bottom quartile, the bottom 25% of our performers. So it's a mini-report card for the kids that, according to their test results, are in the most need of support. Because every district and every school's target groups is different, you'll notice in the first image that there isn't going to be a state bar to compare underneath each of the four different areas listed. However, we still do get a state ranking. The ranking for this was a little bit different. You can see from the state, there are two vertical bars that are almost identical in height. So about half of the state fell in the 50s range, and the other half of the state fell in the 60s. We fell in the lower of the two, with our ranking being 29.8% compared to other K-12 districts. The report cards also post some information now that is truly just for information. The scores and the values on here aren't used to calculate the score. They don't affect the star rating that we get. But it's really cool information to share about all the opportunities that the students have in our district. When this area was new on the 2021 report cards, we saw lots of zeros up here because we didn't have all the data programmed and flowing correctly. So major kudos to our tech department, who worked really hard to get Skyward sending information to the state, because now we're seeing actual values compared to state averages. The first area is this post-secondary preparation, where it looks at advanced courses such as AP, dual enrollment, so any partnership courses that we have with technical or UW colleges. There's different industry-recognized credentials, as well as work-based learning opportunities. Under each value, you'll also see a statement about how many kids either passed or participated in one of these areas. And each statement is a little unique from the others. We get lots of questions usually about the advanced courses in this area. So for AP, the percentage and then the number listed are the amount of students that passed at least one AP course. We do have a lot of students that enroll in more than one AP, but they can only be counted once in this value that they share out. The second area of information is related to the arts programs. There are four different areas: arts and design, dance, music, and theater.
And just to be clear, these would be classes. So for instance, if someone was doing it as an extracurricular, that doesn't count. True or false?
Correct. This has to be courses, classes that they take during the school day. And it could be any of the classes in person or any of the classes that are available through the virtual program as well.
Thank you.
And it says in the fine print, it's also high school. This does not include Silverbrook or Badger, because I know we have way more kids in music than 237. It's just by the time they get to high school, they might not do music anymore, so.
Yeah, things I had noticed. I thought the numbers looked small, but that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, all 912 daddy here. Thank you. All right, so now we're just going to do a quick little highlight and break down each of our schools. As you can see listed here by their star rating, all five of our elementaries, plus our Silverbrook Intermediate School, earned a four-star rating of exceeds expectations. Badger Middle School and both East and West High School earned a meets expectations with a three-star rating. We do have another school in our district that's located in the county jail. It's the juvenile detention center of the Washington Street School. They get a report card too, but they don't use any of the scoring or the calculations like these. But just to report out, we did get a satisfactory progress rating for that for like the 10th year in a row.
Which is the highest?
Yep, the highest you can get for it. No stars, though. As a reminder, as I'm about to share out each school's overall score, just remember that every calculation is unique, as you can see by their pie charts, which are formed by their economically disadvantaged percentage of students. We don't have two schools in our district that have the exact same calculation built into their report card that makes their overall scores. With that being said, here is a snapshot of all of our elementary results. Again, all five elementary schools earned a four-star rating. And within each of those schools, there is different things that we can celebrate and highlight. For Decorah, in the area of achievement, their ELA and math scores continue to be above the state performance. Both Fair Park and Green Tree had great celebrations in the area of math growth, Fair Park earning a 98.3 score, and Green Tree earning a perfect 100 score. For Jackson Elementary, their overall achievement score has been higher than 80 every year since the 2016-17 school year. And for McLean, their achievement ranking, as to how they compare to other K-5 schools in the state, is at 92%, so very highly ranked in performance. For Silverbrook, they earned a four-star rating as well. A celebration for them is that their overall growth score and their ranking for the state increased from the last report card. So they're moving in the right direction. Badger earned a meets expectations of three stars. Their ELA and math achievement continues to be above the state level. When presenting to Curriculum Committee last week, they were wondering, kind of, Badger the year prior had a four-star, and they dropped to a three-star, and they were wondering what happened. While we saw great consistency with achievement and growth in their on-track to graduation, they were one of the schools where the target group outcome, so that mini-report card with those bottom performers, kind of took a big dip. So those struggling learners, that overall score for them is what brought down their overall score, moving from that four-star to that three-star.
A couple of slides ago, where you talk about every school's priority weighting or is there unique, could you pull that up real quick? It's like three slides ago. Are these our actual schools?
Yes.
So how come target group outcomes isn't in the five on the right?
Yeah, so the elementary schools don't have target group outcomes.
Those are elementary schools.
Yes. So all five don't have them. Our elementary schools are K-4, and the state ranks them against K-5 districts. In order for that target group to work, they have to have enough of the historical data to find that bottom quartile. So they need one more year of testing before they can pick up. These report cards have only been in place for two years now. So we need that third year of data. So next year, we would expect that every school will have a target group area as well.
And could significantly change.
It could.
Like what happened to Badger.
Yeah. I think the good thing about the target group area is although you see it in this light, where it's calculated and calculated, we know who those kids are because we get their assessment results throughout summer. So they're already known. They're already being, you know, serviced and taught and differentiated towards. So while you're seeing them in this light, it's not like they're not being helped already. They're already on everyone's mind and actions. Yes, the scores could change. Moving on to the high school, East and West both earned a meets expectations. East and West, I'm sure you guys know, had a phenomenal display with their ACT scores last year. In that area, East specifically saw a big achievement score increase compared to their 2021 report card, which was a great celebration. Much like Badger, we did see them change last year from a four-star to a three-star. In the area of achievement, growth, and on-track to graduation, their scores either stayed the same or increased. But their target group outcome took a significant hit too on that little mini-report card is what had that negative effect to change their star rating year to year. And the celebration for West High School is that their overall growth score increased from 2021 report card. Which if that continues, is a good thing, because as the kids grow, we should see more achievement as well.
One of the things that always is frustrating for me, and should be for everyone else, is at the beginning, when you talked about the co-mingling of all these multiple tests that make up your report card. You can see, and I think it was our last newsletter, where we were celebrating kids who earned the top of the top for their ACT. If you don't take it, sitting in our seat at that time, you can score a perfect score on the ACT, and not only do I not get to count your results, but I get dinged because you didn't technically participate with us. So, and we have kids who, they're going for top-tier scores, right? They're using them to leverage scholarships, opportunities, all of those things. But we do always have, you know, quite a few scores that we cannot count. They might take that ACT multiple times, which, that's wonderful and great. But if they don't sit for it again, and they might want to say, "I'm confident in this score, and I'm going to sit on that, and I'm going to hold right here." If they don't retest with us again, then we, like I said, not only do I not get to report that high score, but I technically am penalized. It's something that we've advocated for, for years, because kids take the ACT throughout the year as juniors, as seniors, and they can map it to the school that you go to in that sense. So we've constantly been advocating for, let us count all of our kids in our achievements and efforts. So to be slotting off some of our top performance is always a point of frustration, not only for me, but for everyone.
So they take it in different locations because of timing, convenience?
Yeah.
What would the reasons be?
I took it three times, and I don't think I ever took it at my high school.
Yeah.
It's just schedule, when I was ready, when I was done with my prep course.
Testing location.
The next test was available at West Side, and I went to West Side and took it, or whatever.
Yeah. What we're familiar with from when we were in school is that you took ACT on a Saturday if you wanted to. You signed up for it, you prepped for it yourself, et cetera. About 10 years ago, the state did two things. It made ACT happen during the school day so that we can give every kid an opportunity to do it for free. So every student gets to take it on the state testing day in March. But students can take it as many times as they want, either prior to or after the state testing day. And then those are called national testing days. So we did have a kiddo last year that got a perfect 36 on a national test day. And yes, we celebrated him, but we don't get to see him on these results just because he didn't test on that state day. So while the state lets us, the kids take it for free, and they get free test opportunity and prep, they also get to use it for accountability as they choose. All right. So this is probably the fourth time you've seen the pyramid tonight, so I don't think I have to go too deep into detail. But as I said earlier, we get all of the results from the assessments. We track attendance and graduation on an ongoing basis. And all of that data flows right into our continuous improvement plan, which the schools then align their work to what the district is trying to target. There are a lot of resources out there. I threw a lot of information at you, but here are just a couple that are linked into your presentation. A lot of them are going to take you to DPI's website, where you can access any school or district's report card for viewing. There's also a page linked for different resources. So if you can't sleep tonight, and you're wondering, "What assessment was used on that slide?", because I'm sure that's what you think about at home, you can go back and look at some of the resources on how the report cards are made and calculated. And then finally, there is a link to our district webpage, where all of our report cards are posted for all of our family and community members to view with easy access. Do you have any other questions about the report cards?
Questions? Important information. Thank you for presenting it. It's always good to have it in context and walk through it. Because I admit, I looked at it in advance and thought, "I don't understand this." But when you explained it, and thank you for answering our questions.
You're welcome. There's lots of fun little pieces to it.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and next is our superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
We're going to have to remind our athletes, as always, we thank them for representing West Bend at State Meets. But I'm pretty sure that Jen Potter, their principal, said, "If school records were broken, there would be a jump in the pool." So I'm going to make sure and not let that one go, and remind those athletes of that. And thank you to Tina Van Rue for the presentations that she provides through Curriculum Committee. I know they go a little bit more in-depth than then those overviews for us. And just a reminder, you see us unpacking that data in the school report cards. Then we'll kind of bring all those together for that district view for continuous improvement, what those benchmarks are, how we're going to drive forward achievement, as well as some of those other variables that we've talked about, the behavior pieces, the engagement pieces. You'll see that kind of come together in that way. So we do inform that. One important thing is using those individualized assessment results too. So not just the big picture around curriculum or instructional practices, or us analyzing what's working and what's not. But we're getting those individual reports so that teachers are kind of setting the table before the kids get to it, understanding where they're at, and making sure that we've given them the tools and all those other resources. A lot of them are collaborative, special ed teachers, interventionists, other specialists, so that they're kind of deepening their toolkit, making sure that they have the resources they need. Because just teaching to the middle, or kind of going canned, to John's point, it's not going to capture some of the ones that are most struggling. It's not going to capture some who walked in maybe secure in a lot of knowledge. Every kid needs to be pushed forward from wherever they are. So we'll kind of bring all these individual schools together and talk about that as we continue to do in the district context. So thank you to Tina. She leads those teams in kind of unpacking results, understanding and helping, even at the classroom level, what to do with those. And we lead a lot of professional development. So as Tanya was saying before, it's one thing to get feedback or data or those pieces, but it's wholly another thing to do something and to yield results from what you're doing. So we look forward to that work. Just another thank you on behalf of the board. I will make sure and send out thank yous to our police departments, our fire departments for an amazing work session. Again, we said all the time, but I think something that really sets us apart is the level of collaboration that our first responders have with our district. And again, having worked in multiple districts, I say that with confidence. So on behalf of the board and administration, I'll make sure and send personalized thank yous to them for their work. And then we have space a little bit later in our discussion to talk about and reflect on that session and kind of any direction the board would like to take there. A reminder to all of our board members, our community members, that Student Council at the high school is holding their community blood drive Wednesday, December 7th, in the South Gym. If you go to the website, you can sign up. You're encouraged to sign up. Slots are going fast, but there's always room. And it goes till 2:30 on that day. So their high school goal is to help save more than 1,200 lives by achieving 400 pints of blood. Again, that's December 7th. Check out our website, give a call to the school, and we can certainly help you get signed up for that important event. Also, just a reminder, until we hit there, I'll keep reminding, December 13th, 7:30 PM, is the Pops Concert, the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra, Holiday Pops at the high school. Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops at the high school. It's the 50th anniversary of the special event, which is offered by Columns. Remember, that's the local, uh, scholarship organization that's unique to West Bend. That organization gives nearly $1 million annually to our graduates. Um, there's also a kickoff event for our high schoolers to learn more about Columns and how to apply for those scholarships. So check that out online too. Um, I don't want to say it because it could come true, but I mean, we are getting into winter, um, and we will run just a reminder to our families and our students around winter weather, uh, and should that impact school, how we make those decisions, when we make those decisions, when you're going to get notified, um, and that potential to have a virtual learning day, um, or, uh, just an off day for a snow day or inclement weather. Last year, we had one for ice, um, so while it wasn't snow. So, uh, we monitor that very carefully. One thing we ask everyone to do is to make sure that your Skyward notifications are set correctly so that you're not waiting for something to scroll through on a TV screen. You are, um, getting information that you need relatively quickly. Again, we're on the phone with each other with our, our weather service partners, making those decisions somewhere around the 5 to 5:30 AM range, um, so that you have what you need. We'll also foreshadow even the evening before anytime we can. So just time to maybe review those procedures, make sure your notifications are set correctly. Uh, another great thing about winter though is, uh, we are turning the, the corner into our winter season. So make sure and check out our website, the high school's website to, uh, look at all the different athletics that are starting, the new clubs or other opportunities, uh, so that you can visit us whether it's for a concert, a performance, or a competition. Uh, just a reminder, uh, that we've moved to an electronic system for admissions. You can still get season passes, pay cash for those, um, but there is an app. Check it out online. You can always get some help at the door, uh, from students or, or staff who are familiar with it. But again, moving with our conference to that online, uh, payment portal should be easier, but again, any trouble navigating it, come see us or purchase your season pass. That's always, that's always the easiest, uh, way, um, and you get quite a deal on all those, those events. So good luck to all of our winter athletes, uh, and we look forward to seeing them compete too. And that's all I had for this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Thank you for your report. We'll move on to our one and only action item tonight, which is 2023-2024 Capital Projects. And Dave Ross, our director of facilities, is here tonight. And Dave, this is a, um, this is, this is round two. You presented this as a discussion item last time.
Yes, absolutely.
Welcome back. Good evening.
I know you've all had a chance to go over these exciting projects, probably, um, really they focus mainly on keeping the water out, whether it's out of the asphalt, out of the concrete, out of the building. Um, does anyone have any questions about any of the projects?
Are there any changes to the exhibit since the last time we saw it, Dave?
No, it is exactly the same.
Questions from the board? And I think, uh, none of these are projects of luxury, they're projects of necessity. I certainly didn't have any argument with them, and as such, I would move to approve the 2023-2024 Capital Projects as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion, second, to approve the 2023-2024 Capital Projects as presented. I'll pause for discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work in putting this together, Dave. Appreciate it. All right. Onto discussion items, and Superintendent Wimmer, you had talked about the follow-up on the board work session on safety, and I think you're going to lead us through discussion of that recap for us tonight as well.
Yep. Uh, just an opportunity, we took in a lot of information, had the opportunity to collaborate with first responders, and then really centered around different facets of safety, whether it was the physical building, communications, all of those things. Uh, we talked about earmarking some dollars and some pieces, and just getting a, a sense from the board, any lingering questions, any, uh, thoughts on direction or any, um, projects from your perspectives that you would like to see prioritized or looked at, uh, as we dedicate, um, some of those dollars and those pieces. So again, uh, I've linked that presentation there and reminded people if you want to watch it, that video is there too. But in those last couple pages, we talked about, you know, the priority is, um, buying time, if you will. So should something happen, um, and we were really specific around just threats, uh, coming into school. Reminder that safety can be, you know, as Dave said, you, you could have a fire, you could have some storm damage and, and a flood in a, a school. It could really encompass a lot of things. Um, but when it comes to an active threat in the school, we talked about, uh, working with the police to increase, uh, a resource officer and what that really entails, um, for the, the next year. Um, but some of the physical structures, we talked about those, um, secure entries being, um, a really big piece, uh, some upgrades to our monitoring video surveillance. Again, there's no interior monitoring right now at elementary, so if, at least to get something in place there, were a priority for the board. We talked about, uh, some of our communication systems, those internal PA systems where you're doing all calls and alerts throughout your building into the immediate vicinity there, as well as our alarm system, fire, all of those being direct connects to that. So just again, setting the stage for the board to have a discussion, uh, to determine their thoughts, wishes, and any direction for us as a team.
When do you think that would happen?
Be more specific.
Sure. I mean, we just approved our, um, 2022-2023 budget. We just literally approved our capital budget. And so, I mean, a lot of things that we talked about during that meeting cost money. And whether it's cameras or if it's doors and locks or bigger projects like secure entrances and things. So, I mean, the discussion has to be obviously priorities and what, what do we want or need, and then how to pay for it. And so that becomes then a budget discussion, potentially, um, even a referendum type of question that, that if it, if costs got to the point where we can't afford it within our own capital budget, then it becomes a, uh, community discussion. So, um, I guess, how do you predict this moves forward? Would it be several different, um, committee meetings of the board? Would it be forming some sort of an ad hoc community type of discussion? Would it be an even bigger picture discussion? It's, you know, the other day, we talked to maybe closing down Rolfs, maybe, maybe moving this facility. So now you're talking facility, bigger picture. So, I don't know, just.
So, and, and just a reminder, kind of where we are in, in the big picture work, right? So we kind of started summer by going into a work session around budget, uh, and our long-term financial outlook and what are some of those levers that we have at our disposal? Because they're very different from even a city or municipality, what we can and can't do and, and what we're, um, kind of, you know, different caps that we have, the referendum structure, all of those things. So we unpacked a little bit of that and what timelines would look like. If you were going for a referendum, if you were going for a spring one, you have to have your resolution set, voted on and approved by January. If you're doing a fall referendum date, you have to have that set, voted on, uh, and approved all that language by an August. So that kind of sets up and works timelines for those really large pieces. And we know that this was one slice of the last referendum, was some of the, the recommendations around safety. You are also looking at trying to get out of that hole that we've talked about with deferred maintenance, which is now cumulatively going to be up to 13 million in addition to, uh, you know, a priority, looking at Jackson, the lands purchased, those are things, and, and getting a new school for Jackson. So we talked about some of those structures, what we can and can't do. And we've been really clear with our community. Yeah, we have big decisions ahead of us because you asked us in 2019 with the no vote on the referendum to pay off the existing debt in those pieces, and we did have our last levy for that debt. So it, it does frame that conversation, um, for us. And then you have to look at two, you know, what do you want to do? Do you want to nickel and dime our community? I, I don't think that's where our community is, where every, you know, so often and you're stacking debt, and you see some people do that. We're going to go for a big one this and a next one here, and, and you get referendum fatigue, right? And you lose track of, aren't I, am I done paying for what we had before? And I think our community kind of told us that in 2019 too. Um, so it's just really talking about, as you said, for a, a, a board to talk about what's the priority. We talked about a little bit of an earmark out of the budget for safety, security, those pieces, and, and what we could do, and, and Andy, you know, like which buckets we can take what for. Um, so when you talk about what are the priorities of the board, um, that helps us to know what strategies can we use short and long term? If, again, video surveillance, okay, maybe I'm prioritizing a certain thing and a recommendation. Um, that kind of conversation helps frame what and how and when, um, for those pieces. Does that make sense? Anything, anyone needs me to expand on?
No, I think that makes sense. My, my thought is when we take a look at these expenditures and you look at all the ideas, I mean, I think these are all really, really good ideas. I have more enthusiasm for incorporating those, these, these practices and suggestions in buildings that we know we're going to keep, and I'm not sure that we're quite there yet. On the one hand, I, I don't, I don't know that we're looking for a different high school location, so I look at that and think, well, you know, maybe that's it. But I, and Joel, maybe this is consistent with what you're talking about and Superintendent Wimmer as well. I think we have to, we, we really have to fold this into a, I mean, this is kind of a unified security and facilities discussion. Now, that being said, and I would ask the other board members to pipe in, if there's something that we're missing, you know, on here, like, oh my gosh, we need video surveillance interior and exterior right now, no matter what, whether we're going to get rid of the building in a year or in a thousand years, then we could certainly look at that. But I think as a general rule, I, I, I look at it as we, we really are stitching together, I think, the security and the facilities discussion.
And so we've plotted along too. So remember in August, we kind of started and launched with that work session around the, the finances? Then Dave led a work session on the facilities and all the updates that we've done and the reports and those pieces, so we could pull that thread through, and then the safety components of this. And then the board asked for, and we will deliver, um, we were asked to analyze every campus actually, instead of just targeting a couple, but what would pulling any campus offline look like? How would it help us right-size the district? We've talked a lot about this building, Rolfs being the easiest closed, most marketable properties, and getting some assessments and values on those properties, um, and as well. So that's a, a deliverable for us. We've updated our UW population because the last thing you want to do is right-size for right now and be stuck in the future where, you know, classes are tight and you, you don't have enough space. So that's, like you said, a key deliverable, is to understand if you take one offline, what's that impact?
Even for the buildings, and even for the buildings that we, you know, plan to keep for a very, very long time. I think Mr. Ross talked about this, uh, at our, at our work session. You know, if there are opportunities to combine this project with a different project, and I'm sorry, Mr. Ross, I'm going to get this wrong, but if we said, oh, we really need to do an HVAC, um, project in a building, which is going to require us to tear out all the ceiling tiles. Oh, if we did that, it would cut half of the video surveillance cost out because the, all the ceilings are open. I think we need to, that's why I think we need to look at opportunities to combine these, these things wherever possible.
And I'll just, I'll just remind everyone, obviously we have the $200,000 that we agreed on last time. Um, but with that, is there something that we can do as far as, uh, maybe a security person to walk through and do an audit of where we maybe be able to start? I'm sure there's somebody around in the, the community that might be willing to donate, you know, a time, or somebody from the sheriff's department or the police department to say, hey, we have a hole here and here. I know for an example, um, kids let other kids through the school doors. I mean, that is something that we should probably focus on, you know, just, just out of, you know, off the top of my head. That just seems like a huge security risk, just allowing kids to have, you know, leave doors open for other students to come in late when, you know, their buddies running behind or something to, to skip the office visit. Um, you know, that's.
Not just student behavior. You know, we talked a, a fair amount of good security practice is based on behaviors of your students, your staff, everyone, and their diligence or community members as well, who are, are visiting and using your sites too. So as you said, when you're holding people accountable and changing practice of, like, this cannot be, um, you know, that's something we have to be diligent into in that monitoring. What I can do is, um, there are some, so some of our first responders who we met, when you talk about that audit, um, that was their contributions at the table, looking at those pieces and kind of where we were. Um, but I can talk about, um, and grab some of the data for people who have had some outside, uh, the DOJ, Office of School Safety, those pieces, uh, even though we work hand in hand with them, I can ask them about their service to schools, uh, and get that.
Kurt, did you have an item?
Here's my, my thoughts of, uh, I think we should take it to the people, um, of this community. And I think one of the reasons is our taxes are for most of us going down on this mill rate. The next mill rate, um, is going to go down too. So if we don't do something now, it'll be good for all. It'll go down again, but then you're raising taxes. It's a prime time, I think, to ask the community for security. And I think most of the community agrees on, we need to do something in Jackson. Um, so I'm in favor of Jackson and a security measure, just like John said, let's get somebody in here that recommends a security solution for most of our schools. Um, I'm in favor. One last thing is, is the extra training day that was discussed for our staff, because, um, I think it's, I was just listening to our, um, to our experts, I learned something. So I know there's more training going on, but having a dedicated training day towards safety, I'm all for.
I'm glad you said Jackson, because if we were to go to the community for a referendum for, you know, all security and skip Jackson again, I think we're going to have a lot of angry people. So would that have to be two though? Because we can't just tie them all together, can we?
No, you can, you can write, uh, you can write them separately as questions, or you can, again, package that together as, you know, this referendum will include, and you can articulate that, um, new construction as well as some of the components. It's, you get legal, um, guidance and how to write your question, and when it trips into two. A lot of times you'll see some capital ones and then operational. If you have to have two questions on a ballot, you'll see those differentiated, um, as well.
Other thoughts, other feedback? I'll just say one other item. It'd be interesting to hear from administration. If there are items on these lists that not only are, are protective from a security perspective, but we get additional lift perhaps by, maybe it improves student behavior. You know, if everyone was under surveillance, I'm not a super, you know, fan of cameras everywhere, but, you know, if that's something where we would get additional lift, that would be, that would be impactful too, as we try to prioritize. But I agree with everything that was said here, that was said here before around how do we, how do we package this up to make it meaningful in the, um, in the future, and asking the community for their, for their input and their vote.
So then our task, kind of listening to some of the preliminary discussion, is as we present that right sizing plan, we fold that back in to look, to see what it would look like as one package, and then set up a potential timeline and what that would look like to ask the community. Correct?
Tanya?
I'm really glad that the training day is being considered because I can, I would imagine that if we don't get everyone on board, um, with keeping doors shut and having, you know, the culture of where we, we take care of ourselves, it's really hard to ask people to spend money on things that are useless if we are not all working together to prevent little things that become big things, unfortunately. So I would hope that that training day would include ways to have regular, um, just engagement about safety for everyone.
So just hearing you on that, um, just showing how we have intervals of engagement around the topic of safety in addition to some dedicated launch of some pieces.
Good discussion. Other thoughts?
And again, you know, it's not a one and done. If things come to you, reach out as you continue to process and think about information, let us know. But then administratively, that's what our team will set up as the task in front of us.
All right. Thank you for the discussion. We're on to future agenda items in our board meeting calendar. Looking at the calendar for the month of December, we have one and only regular board meeting scheduled in December, and that's on December 12th. That's 5:30 PM here at the Education Service Center. The Curriculum Committee will meet at 8:30 AM on December 20th in the Education Service Center. And then our first regular board meeting of calendar year 2023 will be on January 9th, and that's 5:30 PM here at the Education Service Center. Um, those times and dates are technically subject to change, so watch for postings, but that's our planned calendar. our planned calendar at this point. Any questions on the calendar?
Just a reminder that we're looking to finalize our policy dates just as December gets kind of crowded. We're most likely looking into that new year. And just a reminder that the policy team meets a little bit more consistently as we look to accelerate and kind of move through all to get us back on a formal cycle of updating those.
Great. Some more policy committee meetings to be set, so watch for those too. Great, thank you. All right. Any other items for follow-up and communication? Hearing none, we have reached the end of our planned agenda and so I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to adjourn? Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Appreciate everyone who came tonight, everyone watching at home. Have a good evening.